Really, Todd? It's more expensive than you thought?
It was painful.
We'll call the meeting to order. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, due with the flag of the United States of America, and to recollect the glorious sands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. As you can see, Dr. Maher is not with us this evening. Assistant Superintendent Dr. Nold is with us. I don't know if you wanted to explain where Dr. Maher is?
Absolutely, and it's my honor or privilege to sit here on behalf of Dr. Maher. Dr. Maher, this evening, actually through the last couple of days, is out in Washington, DC, representing the state of South Dakota at a state and federal STEM education summit. And they are working together with the state. Dr. Maher was recommended by the governor. And so they're out there at the White House and working with the Office of Science and Technology to start the five-year federal plan for STEM education. So it's an honor for Dr. Maher, our school district, and the state to have him represent us out there in Washington, DC with this summit.
Yep, and we look forward to hearing more on that when he gets back. Thank you. All right. Can I get approval of the minutes of a meeting held on June 11th, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? Okay, and we have one person wishing to address the board. And per our policy, you have five minutes. If you would come up and give your name and your address, and then you've got five minutes.
Yes, thank you. Rick Eltoff, 2600 East 33rd Street. I do want to address the board once again. Thank you for the opportunity to do so. I probably wasn't quite as prepared last time as when I addressed the -- so I hopefully a little more prepared. At the same time, my hearing aid battery had given out on me back then, so I was kind of discombobulated. But anyway. I'm the father of ten living children who have all attended public schools. I also have and am an educator, as I was in the Peace Corps volunteer teaching math and science in the Asian Himalayan country of Nepal. I was an assistant professor of business at Mount Marty College in Yankton. My wife, Mary, majored in social sciences and secondary education. We continue to be educators and being educated as we believe it is very important to our families and our communities. I have great respect for concerned citizens who participate in the process to strive for good government of our institutions. The most recent task force was wisely encouraged by the administration to answer three questions. Number one, is there a need for additional schools? Number two, if so, where should they be located? Number three, if agreed, how should they be paid for? This was the objective set by the administration. When I previously addressed the school board, I strongly suggested a deeper discussion is necessary to fully explore the future of education in the Sioux Falls district. We have a unique opportunity to enhance and strengthen our educational system. The business community, civic organizations, the city, and the surrounding areas are extremely supportive of our efforts to strive toward positive, efficient, economical, and character-building results, which allow us to be proud that we all have a part to secure hope, prosperity, and goodwill for all. Is there a need for additional schools? With the fast-paced reform of education in most other areas of our economy, we cannot be complicit with outdated and even archaic models of our current educational system. For example, telemedicine is evolving at lightning speed with significant improvements and positive outcomes coupled with greater efficiencies. So do our educational systems such as the Khan models. Brick-and-mortar buildings are increasingly being diminished in importance as new ways of efficiency and effectiveness are resulting. Our district has a teacher-student ratio varying from one teacher for one student to one teacher for 23 students. Also in our district, we have one employee for seven students. These ratios indicate a high cost per pupil. Secondly, is there a need, if there is a need, where should these schools be located? The studies that I am aware of indicate space we have is underutilized. Furthermore, with the emergence of more brick-and-mortar store space emerging, becoming available, should they not be considered for repurposing? Especially when they are established on main arteries to them for transportation and certainly have adequate heart. Number three, if agreed on these previous two questions, how should they be paid for? Well, no matter what results, the taxpayers will pay for them. The taxation system by the county assessor favors, that is, is more beneficial for higher-valued properties as there is, end quote, "a lack of sufficient comparable valued properties to arrive at a fair assessed appraisal for these purposes." This results in the owners of middle-class, middle- and lower-market properties bearing an inordinate amount of the tax burden. Remember, two-thirds of the property taxes collected by the county go to the school districts. With the Sioux Falls district already operating with two current opt-outs, it is with great caution that additional funding should be provided. Much deeper discussions need to be considered for the best results to be realized. We all must take responsible actions for the health, education, and well-being of our communities. Thank you. I would also like to add on to Superintendent Brian and his wife. Happy anniversary today, too. I expected him to be here, but in his absence, I suspect you will be pleasantly able to pass that on to him.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? All right. Good news report. Deanne.
You've probably noticed that a couple of students have increased the presence of with their suits and their professional attire here in the room. As you know, the Sioux Falls School District supports a forensics program in each of the three original high schools, Lincoln, Roosevelt, and Washington. And all programs have had great success over the past years. At all three schools, they run both speech and debate activities as part of the National Speech and Debate Association. Specifically, our schools compete in the Rushmore District with eight other schools in the southern part of the state. And these students are fresh back from Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and they decided to spend a Monday evening with you. They competed in the National Speech and Debate Association National Tournament. To earn a spot, they had to qualify in their event through the competition at district tournaments. Of forty of the possible spots available for Nationals, Sioux Falls School District was represented by seventeen of those spots, with a total of twenty students competing. Washington had four students competing in policy debate and duo interpretation. Roosevelt had four students competing in world schools debate and congressional debate. Lincoln had twelve students competing in policy debate, Lincoln-Douglas debate, humorous interp, original oratory, extemporaneous speaking, congressional debate, world schools debate, and big questions debate. I hope they're all able to tell you a little bit more about what that means. We're going to have each of those students come forward, say their name, the school they represent, and maybe something they enjoyed from the week. So I think they're all prepared to do so. There was a little flipping of the coin going on about who was going to go first, but just step right up.
Because they all wanted to, right? They all wanted to.
Please, yes, they were. They were just.
I don't think there's a shy one in the group.
Yeah, come forward, and go ahead. You have the floor.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Nash. I am going to be a senior next year, and I qualified in world schools debate this year, where there's a team of five people, and they compete against another team of five people to sort of pass a bill, a resolution, over multiple topics. We talked about gun control, and whether Puerto Rico should become a state or a country in itself, and similar things like that. And one thing that I enjoyed about Nationals is just developing my speaking skills and being able to work better with other people, especially talking about real-world issues that I normally don't get to talk about in the high school setting.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Abby DeCramer, and I'm from Lincoln High School. I'm going to be a sophomore next year, and at the National Speech and Debate Association Tournament, I competed in congressional debate. In congressional debate, it's set up as a congress, and with that, you are to pass or not pass bills. These bills are based on current issues, both domestic and foreign. And I really enjoyed this tournament because it developed my speaking skills and also gave me a realization of what congress is to look like.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Katie Osmondson. I will be a senior at Lincoln next year. I qualified in domestic extemp again this year. And basically, what extemporaneous speaking is, is I draw a question on a domestic policy such as current day news, and I get thirty minutes to write a seven-minute speech on it and give it without any notes. And I think the biggest thing that Nationals taught me this year is especially how much hard work can pay off if you put into it.
Hi there, my name's Maximilian Peters. I will be a senior at Lincoln High School next year, and I qualified in congressional debates, just as Abby DeCramer did. In congressional debates, again, you pass bills and debate them. They can range from whether we should sanction Ethiopia, to whether we should make U.S. Cyber Command an independent branch for our military, to just passing single pair healthcare, which can vary from foreign affairs to more obscure domestic affairs to more things that we talk about more generally. I know that at least three of the people here at Lincoln High School competed head-to-head against someone who eventually became a national champion. I was one of those people who was unfortunate enough to do that, but it was a really great experience to do that because I got to learn from so many different people in so many different styles and at such a high caliber. So that's kind of taught me a different ways to do it besides just how we do it in South Dakota. So that is very nice.
Thank you.
I'm David Mickelson. I'm going to be a senior at Lincoln High School, and I qualified in policy debate, and that's what I did normally throughout the school year. And during policy debate, we talk about specific policies the U.S. government can pass. And this year, it was education and whether or not we should increase funding or regulation of it. And the one thing I really liked at the national tournament is that I got to learn, one, like what they, other people from other states, thought that the U.S. federal government should do, as well as like see how that compares with what we thought. My partner and I, Dakota Folkerts, we decided that we should do something about Native American education, while someone else thought that there should be something done about like Title I corporal punishment.
Thank you.
Hello there, my name's Blake Anderson, and I'm going to be a junior at Washington High School. And unlike these debaters around me, I represent the interp half of the tournament, and I competed in duo interp. And obviously, my partner couldn't be here tonight because I'm not to people. But the coolest part of the tournament for me was just like realizing that this program is like going to develop the future leaders of America. And like, the kids who are ready to speak are usually the people that are usually going to make something and change the world. So that was really cool to see. And I think it's a program that should really be pushed and enforced because it will bring out the best in students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Engie Wong. I will be a senior at Roosevelt High School next year, and I've been doing debate for my entire high school career. This year was the second year I qualified in Nationals, where I again competed in world schools debate with a team of five people. We debate three at a time against another team of three. Unfortunately, we lost the first three rounds back-to-back, and then we came back and won the last three rounds. So we ended our prelim record as three-three. And something I took away from this tournament was how valuable speech can be to the people you might not expect. Even though I might seem like I'm not terribly nervous up here now, I once was the person who would be shaking in the back of the room even thinking about the people who were up there speaking. And those skills that I've taken away from debate, from analyzing facts, from making those relationships not just in the round but outside, those have been very valuable to me, and I thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ian Ward. Come the start of the next school semester, I will be a senior at Lincoln High School. I qualified to the national tournament in big questions debate. Previously in the year, I was in Lincoln-Douglas debate. Big questions debate is one of the more philosophical realms of debate. This year, the resolution being contested was resolved, humans are fundamentally different from other animals. The evidence was as varied as it was impassioned, ranging from the biology of the human mind to Genesis. So you'll imagine I have a heck of a job there. Coming to the toughest part of my speech, I believe it is still an injustice in a slight to condense three years of character development into what did I learn at Nationals? But given that those in attendance don't have time for a two-hour sermon, I will try to be concise. And as a debater, that is a Herculean task. So at Nationals, and more so throughout my three-year tenure at debate, Mr. Martinet has taught me that so long as anyone, not just debaters, can embrace rational thinking, an ability to communicate both effectively and compassionately, and the ability to take loss in stride, and to go back to your team and your family with a smile on your face, then no one, human or animal, can be fundamentally alone. Thank you. Oh, and before I lead us off here and offer the mic to Martinet, we saw the ballots at Nationals, but it was confirmed this morning via the National Speech and Debate Association page that I have now placed top six in the nation in big questions debate. So I believe that's what he wanted me to get across.
Congratulations.
Hello, I'm Tony Martinet, the debate coach at Lincoln High School. We also have with us Travis Dolly, the debate coach at Washington, and Michelle McIntyre, the interp coach at Washington. I would just conclude by saying Ian's right, he was sixth in big questions debate. David Mickelson and Dakota Folkerts, along with Izzy Osorio and Izzy Curry from Washington High School, made elimination rounds in policy debate. So out of a field of one hundred and ninety, they were in the top twenty, thirty percent of that field. And then also Jonathan Nash was part of the world schools teams that made it to elimination rounds, top sixty-four. It's important to understand that to qualify to this tournament, it takes a lot in every district students come from. There's at least twenty to thirty entries in those district tournaments. We have three districts here in the state of South Dakota, so that's at least seventy to eighty kids per event just to get to Nationals. I want to thank the school board for your continued support of this activity and these programs. As you can tell, the students gain a lot from it, not just the accolades, but the hard work. As Engie mentioned, in debate especially, we learn early on after each round whether you win or lose, and kids have no choice but to forget about it and move on to the next goal and keep striving, which I think are all very great skills that students learn. They learn it in the classroom, in the presence of a teacher, and in the presence of other individuals as well.
Thank you. I'm a little disappointed, none of you said that Waffle House was your highlight of your trip inside. Oh, sorry. All kidding aside, I'm just so impressed by all of you. First of all, getting up here, and I know you guys do this all the time, so it's probably easy for you, but understand that coming in front of the board can kind of be a little scary sometimes. But just impressed with all you guys have done and how far you moved forward at Nationals, and just congratulations. I know you guys will go far.
I would just like to add, I think many of you probably started this because you thought it was fun, or maybe you had a friend. And I think when you leave high school, and some of you that's in a year from now, and some of you that's three years from now, but the skills that you will have learned will set you apart from so many students. Just listening to each of you and watching your mannerisms and your body language and your confidence is going to set you apart in a job interview, in a presentation, in so many different avenues. And those are such important skills that unfortunately, I think people take for granted. And so you should all be very proud of the hard work that you have and the skills that you may not even know that you're exhibiting, but really set you apart from your peers. So congratulations and keep up the hard work, and thank you for representing Sioux Falls in a very positive way at Nationals. And for those of you that may get a chance to go next year, good luck to you.
A lot of these students I've known since their freshman year. David's my son, and I've watched all these children grow up, and I just, I'm so impressed of how you've all matured. And I just want to give a huge shout-out to the coaches. This sport is year-round, and it's a lot of work, a lot of travel, a lot of time. So thank you for all the time you guys put into these students. It's very appreciated.
Thank you. You guys can leave now if you want. (APPLAUSE). All right, I did not see any conflicts of interest for this meeting. So can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? All right, and can I get a motion to approve the supplemental consent agenda items nine A, Claims to Sanford, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? That passes with two abstentions from Board Member Ryder and Board Member Mickelson. All right, moving on to the reports of the superintendent.
Thank you.
Dr. Nold.
The first report being given this evening on behalf of the superintendent is by the Senior Director of Special Services, Deb Mylenberg-Wilson, and that will be the Tier Two Elementary Evaluation Report.
Good evening. I bring you a report tonight that's been constructed by a team of principals and district staff. And I think everybody else is out having fun, and you get me. So anyway, I thought it was important to give you a little history. Some of you have been here throughout this tier-two process, some have not. And so we'll briefly do that. And then with the help of Doug Morrison and the principals, we've put together some evaluation of that. So our strategic plan had two tasks in it, under school, climate, and culture, this year, surrounding elementary tier-two. One was for us to implement the expansion of the program to Laurel Wilder Elementary, and the second was to evaluate the impact at all elementary tier-two sites and think how that would impact our future direction. So the goal of our tier-two program is to provide immediate intervention for students to learn appropriate social and emotional skills while continuing their academic work at schools. The program locations have expanded. Over these past four years, we started at Annie Sullivan and Terry Redland, and then after two years, expanded to Garfield, Hayward, Cleveland, and Hawthorne. And this past year, we moved to Laurel Wilder. The framework of research principles that we've used in its design is based on the Hanover Research for Developing Social Emotional Skills with Students in This Age Range. And we've replicated that. In your written report, I've outlined the actions we've taken related to each part of the tier or the framework. So the first one is that the model be based off of tiered approaches. It's not a one-size-fits-all, that we increase our intensity as students' needs require, that we have ample professional development for the people who are leading that model to ensure the fidelity of it, that we embed those social skills throughout the school day. For children this age, it's not a one-and-done deal. It's got to be across environments. That we target instruction in small groups, and that each student then also have a behavior plan. That we have a systematic and collaborative approach for collecting and utilizing data to plan and monitor progress, and that we always have a plan in place for severe behavioral episodes. So we have implemented each part of that, and I believe that as each year matures in developing and implementing this program, we've gotten better at each of those steps. We have very dedicated staff in those programs who are very committed to intervening in this very specialized area for students. So as it relates to Task One, prior to this past school year beginning, we hired a teacher, and we also hired a behavior facilitator. They were in place, and all of those trainings were provided to those two. They were in place, and all of those trainings were provided to those two individuals, as well as the Boystown training to the whole Laurel Wilder staff, and then the review 360 data collection process training, which is software-based, was implemented for the administrative and tier-two staff. And then tier-two staff had specialized training with their colleagues specific to that role. You could see in the report that Laurel Wilder has had a great year, and their principal and I think their overall team is very pleased with what's going on this year. They did a qualitative survey of their staff a little after the mid-year point to get feedback from their staff, because the way we've implemented tier-two is it's not just an add-on more. Buildings have to do a little give to get in that model, and it was received very favorably by their peers. They were all well-invested, you could get that message through the survey, and they believed what they were doing was good for students. At the end of the school year, the administrative team did an analysis of their time students were suspended over the course of the year, because one of our goals is that kids are in instruction, not OSS'd or I-assessed, whichever the case is. And in the report, I listed the great percentages of improvement that they saw at Laurel Wilder, which was a significant change. If kids are learning and in school, we know that you'll see benefits beyond just behavior All of the tier-two principals, Brenda Bernard, Doug, and I spent time looking at the impact of all the sites. And we looked at that data both in aggregate and disaggregate form, so that we could see how individual schools looked, as well as the overall impact. When we looked at the overall impact, we saw four areas where we saw positive trends that could have positive long-term impact for students and also for the district in both situations. As we looked at all the exceders, or students who graduated from tier-two and analyzed their behavior, the incidences were more than 60% decreased from when they entered. Now, some might say, should it have been more than that? Well, that would be really sweet, indeed. But children are children, we don't expect them to be perfect, so they're still going to have incidences, but to have that significant a decline will affect their school's success, which is really what our goal is in this situation. We looked at how many students from those schools would be referred to district behavior teams, meaning the school feels like they don't have the knowledge or manpower in their building to really tackle some of those challenges. And we saw a significant decrease over two now consecutive years of that, which the message for us tells us people have confidence at those seven schools to start to tackle the challenges of these youngsters. I don't ever want to see that get to zero, because if someone needs outside help, we want that available to them. But to see that decline is probably a positive trend on the overall culture that's going on at that school. The third one is we've spent a lot of time looking at individual behaviors, types, numbers, reoccurring pieces of those, and we looked at those in the context of the district discipline matrix, because it lumps behaviors into different sets. So we see downward trends in level three, five, and six kinds of behaviors. Five and six tend to be behaviors that are more illegal in nature, they aren't as high in frequency at our elementary level. So a positive trend in any level is great, but probably three, the level-three behaviors, would have the most significant impact on the climate at a school. They happen much more frequently, they tend to be of more of a disruptive nature, like destruction of property, intimidation, threat, or physical aggression, fighting, offensive language, continued willful disobedience. So that decrease in three, that trend probably does start to impact what our goal is in this part of the strategic plan. Important to those of us who look at each child individually in this process is also that when we study the offenses, we also saw a downward trend in the number of students who were exhibiting multiple offenses. Any of us might make a bad choice on a given day, but it's those students who are repeatedly exhibiting those behaviors that we worry for the student as well as the school. And so to see that downward trend gives us positive feelings about what might be. So overall, we see positive trends. I don't think any of us think we've reached utopia in the area of behavior. We know we all have to keep our sleeves rolled up and keep working on it. I think what this more in-depth analysis did for us is really forced us to ask ourselves hard questions and to have information to prove what we wanted our hypotheses to be. I think it also showed us that we really need to provide continued reflection and dialogue with principals, because you see some differences between the schools, and so that we can continue to work as a team to learn from each other and to continue and improve, which we'll continue to work with those teams on that. So I would ask you to acknowledge the tier-two evaluation report and the continuation of providing those services at those seven schools going forward, and I would stand by for any questions that you have.
Does anybody have any questions? Thank you, Deb. Appreciate it very much. Can I get a motion to acknowledge the elementary tier-two evaluation report? So moved.
Second.
What I'm just really impressed with, Deb, is that when we started our strategic planning process all those years ago, it was just the idea that behaviors have increased in the classroom. And taking that, just that goal on how to decrease that into what you guys have done over these last several years, I'm just super impressed, and I know there's been a lot of hard work and, like you said, tough questions that you've even asking yourselves to make this program successful, really. To see that downward trend is amazing, so thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right, moving on.
Our second report this evening is a report on the federal Head Start Review that'll be given by Val Peters, potentially her last board report.
It is.
You never know, she may come back at some time for an encore performance. But Val has dedicated her 12 years in this role and position as a coordinator of the early childhood services and 24 years of the school district, but truly has a deep passion for our youngest learners. So she vowed this was going to be her last review with the federal Head Start program, but it is a good one, and she'll share that with us this evening.
Thank you. The good news report is a hard one to follow.
It is.
You can tell your students, I still shake in my shoes when I have to get here. It took me longer than 30 minutes to write this report. I might get through it in seven minutes or less, but I will be using my notes. So with that, it's my pleasure to be here tonight to tell you about our most recent federal Head Start Review. As a Head Start program, our program is reviewed by the federal Head Start Office as well as by our regional office. So our federal Head Start funding is based on a five-year grant cycle. Within that five-year time period, your program will be reviewed in a variety of different ways. There's a Focus One review, a Focus Two review, there are class observations in your district's classroom or your program's classroom, as well as yearly visits by the regional office and phone calls to monitor how you're doing on a regular basis. The federal monitoring process is designed so that it can look at the grantee's compliance with the federal Head Start Act and the performance standards. It'll look at the progress that your program is making, as well as the processes that will ensure that you have continual program improvements and a plan for that improvement, the use of data, local procedures, as well as program implementation. The data that you get back from the federal report and the review can be used then to determine if you're a quality program, or if there are areas that you need to focus on and continue to improve even further, or if your program will go into the designated renewal system, DRS, which is not where you want to be, as that means that you have a number of non-compliances or some significant factors that you will then go up and you will compete again for your funds. So right now, it's a continuing grant, we just have to do our grant, make it complete, and that money is there. If you fall into that designated renewal, then you are competing again for the money and could potentially lose it. We don't want to be there, so. The Focus One review is really an off-site review, that's where those federal monitors talk to you, but via phone, they review the documents that you have online, your grant processes that you do. They're kind of in a gathering data mode, so they're asking questions, they're listening to your answers, they're reading what you write about, they're looking at how you monitor your grant and the funds for your grant, but they're not onsite. The Focus Area Two, which is what we completed in March, is an onsite review. So for a week, we were hosts to the federal monitoring team, and during that time that they're with us, they have meetings and discussions with our key staff, with the administrators of our program, with our policy council, with our board reps, with our parents. They are actually in the classrooms, watching what's happening in the classroom, looking at curriculum implementation, they're looking at interactions with teachers and students, they're watching procedures that happen in the classroom, reviewing health and safety monitoring, as well as looking at our buildings, our grounds, our fiscal procedures, and how we monitor our finances, and then they're reviewing our audits that we have ongoing as a part of the district. So those areas look at, and these are also key areas of the Head Start Performance Standards, if you were to read what the Head Start Performance Standards are, they're broken down into these areas, which are, let's see if I can find them on my notes here, monitoring and implementing quality education and child development services, program design and management, monitoring and implementing quality health program services, monitoring and implementing quality family and community engagement services, monitoring and implementing fiscal infrastructure, monitoring eligibility, recruitment, selection, enrollment, and attendance, and that's often called ERSIA. The third component of a federal review is the class observations. CLASS stands for Classroom Assessment Scoring System, and this is where reliable and trained observers come in with the class tool, and they spend a significant amount of time in a classroom monitoring the interactions that are happening. The interactions are broken down in three domains, emotional support, classroom organization, and instructional support. And then there are many sub-areas in each of those areas. So in our Head Start Focus Area Two report summary, it's broken down into three different areas, an overall performance summary, program, infrastructure oversight and improvement, and then also service delivery. Your grantee or your program obtains a performance status of your program met all requirements, which is a green circle with check marks in all of those areas, or your program has an area of concern or an area of noncompliance and one or more requirements assessed, or your program has not met all of the requirements, or your program has a deficiency. Our program report showed that we had met all of the requirements, so as the regional office would call it, it was a clean report, which means we don't have any follow-up that we need to do, there isn't anything that we need to do to change any of the procedures or processes, we just need to keep doing what we're doing and continue to strive to improve in the areas that we can improve on for that continuous performance improvement. The class observations, these are probably the most stressful for the classroom teachers as they have someone in and they know that they're watching. While they're all very familiar with the class, we do this every year with our teachers so that we can monitor internally, but out of all of our teachers, it's a random selection, so we don't have any say in who they're going to go and visit, and some teachers are selected, aren't they lucky for both their morning and their afternoon sessions, so they have two observations. It doesn't matter if the teacher is a brand-new teacher or if they're a veteran teacher, everyone can be selected. All of the class scores, you'll see that on the chart that you have in the report, all of our scores for our Sioux Falls School District were at or above the 2017 national average, which is a good place to be. We want to continue to move those scores up. A score of six in all three of those domains, no matter how high all of the other programs go across the nation, if you're a six, you're considered a program of excellence, and that takes you out of that designated renewal process. So that's where we strive to be, but also it's best practice and it's what's best for children. So with the exception of negative climate you'll see there, that one is rated inversely, so the best score you can get there is a one, a seven would not be a good score, so that's why that score looks lower there. It's the right way, that's what we want to see with that. You'll notice that the areas that we have more growth to do in others is also pretty typical of those across the nation, it's that area of instructional support. This is where we're giving quality feedback to children, not just simple questions that they can answer, but we're expanding their knowledge about concepts, we're asking them to think deeper about things, not just rote skills. We're giving language modeling, we're using big words with little kids, so the words they hear and understand are the words they're going to read when they're in third grade and comprehend, a quality of feedback. So we're looking at conversations with children that are higher level, not just a yes or no question, but really taking them to the next steps in their learning process. So while we are at or above the national average in that, that's an area that we continually work for to strive to improve with all of our staff. So as a grantee for the federal Head Start program, we received just over $2.5 million for programming for 414 eligible children. We were happy with the results of our review this year, it was a good way to end the year, and I would ask that you would acknowledge the report. I'd be happy answering questions that you might have. Thank you, Val. Is it seven minutes or less? Very well done. I think Mr. Martinette would give you two thumbs up, yes. Okay. Any questions for Val? All right, can I get a motion and a second to approve the Head Start Review?
So moved.
Second.
Well, Val, I would just like to thank you, because for the last nine years, I've been able to work with you on the Head Start Policy Council, and just, it's been a pleasure working with you, and your hard work is obviously paying off on this program. I know that the teachers work hard and everyone involved in the Head Start program works hard, from the family service coordinators to the teachers, to the EAs, to everybody, so just, it's a great way to send you off, wish you all the luck, and hope you get to spend a lot of time with your family, so thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate all the support that you have all provided to the program, it is a great program. While you always have things that you can work on, I believe every person who's in that program has their heart in the right spot, and that you can't teach people. So Elizabeth will take it forward from here, and she'll do a great job, so thank you. Yes, and welcome, Elizabeth. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right, next report.
And the final and third report this evening will be the post-secondary enrollment report, provided to us by Assistant Superintendent Dr. Boyson, who is just coming off a very successful symposium that was over at Washington High School, that was a great professional development for our staff over there, which obviously has a direct impact on our students in our schools, and so the post-secondary enrollment report by Dr. Boyson.
Thank you, Dr. Knoll. We did have a great time at Washington, we had 350 attendees, seven national presenters, and 12 school districts represented, so it was a great two days. Washington did a great job hosting us, and so it was fun, so I'll bring you more information on that later, but it was a great time, so thank you. Tonight, I bring you the post-secondary enrollment report, and it feeds our strategic
Tonight, I bring you the post-secondary enrollment report and it feeds our strategic plan priority area, student outcomes. Statement will provide rigorous, effective, and engaging curriculum instruction for all students to emphasize growth and reduce the achievement gap with a special focus on literacy, differentiation, equitable access, college readiness, and that's the key one here, is that college readiness and looking at how many kids go on to some type of post-secondary degree, whether it's a bachelor's degree, an associate's degree, or some type of certificate. And so the Bureau of Labor and Statistics tell us by 2022 that 65% of our students will need a post-secondary degree. And whether, again, that's a bachelor's and associate's... Sorry. There we go. ...degree or some type of certificate. And employers are looking for STEM, healthcare providers, healthcare support, community services, all these occupations. They want cognitive skills, active listening, students who are able to communicate, and critical thinking. So most jobs, they secure that high school education and they need to go on. And when you look at the graph up on the screen there, you can see by 2020 that gold or that orange bar, that number decreases, and those are the kids with just a high school diploma. And so we need to continue to look at preparing our students for their future and what their needs will be. And that light blue bar, the second from the top on 2020, that's the number of students that will need some type of advanced degree, and they're showing a bachelor's degree there. And then the greater, that 11%, that top is a higher degree. So how can we provide that? And we hear that from the workforce, their workforce development. What can we do to provide multiple pathways for students? So the post-secondary enrollment, the records that we use, we obtain that from the National Clearinghouse, and the Clearinghouse enables districts to access the information electronically, and it represents 3,600 post-secondary institutions enrolling 98% of all students in public and private institutions. Participating institutions provide this information. As a result, though, the Clearinghouse is FERPA compliant, and so the total number of post-secondary enrollments isn't our actual graduation records because students have to get permission to release their information. Also, it doesn't include anybody that goes into any of the military, and so those numbers aren't included in there either. As you can see, the top 10 enrollments from students from the Sioux Falls District, we have SDSU, USD, STI, Augustana, Dakota State. And when we get right there between Augustana, Dakota State, and USF, Dakota State jumped above USF for the first time in a long time, so they're up by 14. So then it'll be fun to watch that, just to see if that increases with that computer immersion and the work that we're doing with Code to the Future and then DSU, STI, Pathway for Computer Science. And another one that flipped, and I can say this because Dr. Mahler's not here, is the U of M jumped above UNL, so just by a few students in that year, so I can...
My phone's ringing. What the...
Oh. So there's our chart and it looks at where they're going. Another trend that we saw when we looked at this data was the number of students who have moved from, in this reporting year, we had more students going out of state than in-state, and so that just fluctuated a few percentages between that. But 57% of our students enroll in post-secondary right after, their first year after high school, and that is steady, and we see that trend continue. And so that's a good look at that, and that's that top line there. And then that second line shows the students that are going to in-state, that dropped by 3%, and the students that went to out-of-state during that year was increased by 3%. So our next graph here will show the number of students that they go, we have 57% that go immediately after high school, but within two years, the number jumps to 66%. So there again, that baseline has stayed the same for about three years that we have. We continue to have our students enroll within the first two years after high school and whether that's post-second technical school or a four-year university. And the last chart shows that progression towards graduation at that post-secondary level, and we continue to have our students graduating at high levels. They continue to pursue their enrollment in post-secondary institutions over time due to delayed entrance, a 65% overall average any time during the first two years between 2010 and 2016. Most jobs, again, require applicants to have a post-secondary education training beyond high school, and employers continue to look for those cognitive skills such as listening, communication, and critical thinking on their post-secondary education necessary requirement. Therefore, the post-secondary enrollment data will continue to be retrieved and analyzed and we can look at that for our graduates. I ask that you acknowledge the report and I'll stand by for any questions.
I think this report is just so helpful for us to be responsive to what we're going to need to provide for kindergarten students, for example, when they're looking to what they want to do after graduation. And with our computer immersion, my one concern is at Lincoln, for example, we've got rid of AP Computer Science. I just found out, and it's like we need to see how we can, if we're focusing on STEM and trying to be caught, we can't be getting rid of classes like that. And I talked to Dr. Mahler about that and I really would like to see, make sure all three of our high schools have an AP computer class when we're focusing so much on computer science in our district.
And it'll be really fun to see how that rolls out here coming up, so yes.
Yeah, thank you.
And we did hear, and like you said, those kindergarten students, we need to make sure we're focusing on them. We heard last week that they won't need to know how to drive a car.
Yeah.
The kids that are born this year get that, so we'll see.
Because they're going to be living at home with their parents.
Exactly. Maybe.
That might be true. That's scary.
So we'll continue to look at those technologies and AP computer science and the needs, yes.
All right, any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, can I get a motion and a second to approve the post-secondary graduate report?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. All right, that motion passes, and can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
We are adjourned. Thank you.